We'll call to order the City Commission for El Dorado November 19th, 2018. First thing for our agenda would be roll call.
Mayor Meeks?
Present.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Commissioner Radley?
Here.
Commissioner Wilkerson?
Present.
Thank you. Next, we would invite Pastor John Ainman to lead us in invocation.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Let's pray. Lord God, we pause for a moment to acknowledge your hand of blessing upon us this day. We thank you for the privilege of living in a community that operates according to order and not chaos. We thank you that we live in a land that is free, purchased in part by the many efforts of the veterans whom we recently recognized, men and women we are proud to call friends and neighbors. We pray your blessing, heavenly Father, upon those who serve on this city commission. Some of the burdens that they have to carry are heavy, and we ask you to strengthen them for their work. We pray that the citizens that they represent would also treat them kindly and support them, give them wisdom, that in the decisions that they make, all who live in the community of El Dorado would be able to live in peace and prosper. It is in the name of your Son, our Savior, Jesus Christ, that we pray. Amen.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a fairly brief agenda tonight, so we'll move on. No proclamations nor personal appearances for tonight. Moves us to public comment. At this point, is there anybody from the audience who wishes to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Consent agenda was in everyone's packet earlier in the week, late last week, I guess. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? If there are none, I would entertain a motion.
I move that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay, so moved in second. Any further question or comment? On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Having no old business, we'll move to new business. In your agenda packet, we have a planning special use for campground for Deer Creek, excuse me, Deer Grove, RV Park. This is in the county, is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, Commissioners, this is in the city's ETJ, extraterritorial jurisdiction. Before each night is the consideration of a special use permit at property located at 2953 Southeast Highway 54. The property you see on the map is in the yellow bordered area is what we're considering tonight for the special use permit. That property is currently zoned, manufactured home park residential, and they're requesting a special use permit to allow a campground. Planning Commission held the public hearing and voted five to zero to recommend approval with the condition that Butler County review a drainage plan for the improvement of the campground on the undeveloped piece of property.
Okay.
Any questions? Why do they recommend looking at drainage plan?
There was some feedback from a neighbor, a joining neighbor about drainage and concerns. And with this being outside of, this area being within our land use control, but not our regulations as far as how things develop, they just wanted the county to be aware there was a concern and asked that they take a look at that. I spoke to the county and they said they definitely would do that.
So what is this telling us?
That is the applicant's map, and I believe it's showing the drive network around the mobile home park.
Okay, so proposed.
I think we have recommendation from the Planning Commission, and you see your notes from the commission meeting. We also see the comments relative to the standard for review. I don't think there's anything. Question I have, and would you please clarify, when, sometimes we see these from the county and sometimes we don't, is, what is the, remind us the protocol for when the city acts on this first before the county does, in terms of our ETJ?
Yes, so the protocol on this is if there is a request for something zoning related or some land use proposition within our ETJ, the county sends them to us, and we start discussions with that potential applicant on what they're looking to do, what they're thinking about, and then that applicant goes ahead and applies with the city of El Dorado to make a zoning change, to make a, to request a special use permit. And after we receive that applicant, all the data that the city of El Dorado would require, we forward that on to Butler County, and you'll see in your packet this evening, a letter from their community development director saying it falls within their comprehensive plan.
But it hasn't gone to them yet.
No, and it will not. They're using this protocol where a letter from the director says it meets with it, their comprehensive plan, and that suffices their requirement.
Oh, okay. However they want to do it.
Early on, early on, it did go where we actually went to the Board of County Commissions and set and presented the fine, you know, and they no longer do that, though. It's just a letter from staff saying, "We see no issues," or "We have these concerns, maybe." Typically, they're all pretty.
So essentially, we, in our ETJ, was a five mile? What's the zone, three, a three mile zone?
More like, I mean, it's not a hard three miles.
Right.
But.
The city's decision on those zoning is the final decision?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And that's based off of that interlocal agreement?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Any other further questions or comments?
What's the ordinance number?
Chief, 12-2.
If there are none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
I have a lawyer coming, and we were told this meeting was at seven for this issue.
It's six-thirty, and I don't know that.
The letter that we received said seven or thereafter.
There shouldn't have been a letter with the city commission meeting.
I, I got one, and you talked to somebody here as well, so.
It wasn't me.
David, are you aware of any letter, Ashley?
No.
You don't have the letter with you, do you, sir? I do not.
Okay.
Beyond that, I don't know that there's a mechanism for anyone to address that.
This, this, this part of it's not a public hearing. That public hearing was at the Planning Commission.
Right, so there's not necessarily time for anyone to speak at this, at this meeting? Does that make sense? Yeah.
So people around this have no, no more say, it was just a flat, well, this is the way it can be?
Well, sir, I believe that there was a.
It's, it's, it's thirty feet from my house where these campers are going to be. We can't use our backyard at all anyway because of the, we had a pool back there one time, and they harassed us, the camp people. I'm, this is just, it's crazy.
Well, I definitely understand you wanting to, to, to be able to have an opportunity to speak, but I think that the public hearings aren't even held, and we certainly can't have you, the microphone can't hear you, we can't have you talking to the back of the room in the middle of a meeting. So, and I don't want to speak, if you're represented, I personally, I'm the city's attorney, I can't speak to you personally, but I'm happy to speak to your attorney, which I will certainly say and do.
Well, we'll proceed on schedule with this. We've got a motion and a second, is that correct? Did we have a second?
I made the motion, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you had.
Yes, I started to.
Okay.
So, okay, so let me ask this question before I make the motion. We make this motion, and it approves, it approves, is there, does this gentleman have an appeal process in any way?
No, it would be, it would be through district court between the landowners.
Okay. Okay. I mean, I'm just, I just wanted to address it before, I mean, not, I don't want him to think that.
No, I mean, I, I don't think there's an appeal, this stage is the end stage, it's in terms of as far as we're concerned, there's a mechanism in which you can file a lawsuit that would then stop anything else from happening.
Okay. Okay. Well, Mr. Mayor, I approve, I move to approve case number eighteen dash oh-seven dash SUP, requesting an SUP for a campground, and that ordinance number, G-1292, be approved.
Second. Okay. Okay, so moved in second. Any further question or comment? Roll call.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Radley?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Meeks?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Move to item number eleven on our agenda, which would be reports. Anybody have something from the commission to report?
I have no reports, but I would like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and also to remind you that even though Friday may be Black Friday, Saturday is Shop Local. So remember Saturday, you can't be too tired from Black Friday shopping. Go downtown and do some shopping. Your turn.
Prairie Trails had a meeting last week, advisory board, last week and the week before, and they asked a lot of questions about the, I can't think of their name.
Great Life.
Great Life proposal, and at their second meeting, they voted unanimously to pursue that, or the, the sale part, not the, or the lease, but the sale. So they were, they asked a lot of good questions, and they gave a presentation, and it was impressive. They know what they're doing, so. And then, on December first, it's a Saturday, is the annual St. Nicholas Cookie Fair at Trinity Episcopal Church at 400 West Ash. I believe it starts at eight, and eight to noon, I think, so you need to get there early. But it's cookies by the pound, and cake, and soup, and I think they have some other things, too. So hope everybody can stop by that, so that's all I have.
All right, thank you.
I had lunch with the seniors on Thursday. Their food was, was really good, it's coming out of Lake Point, and they had a full, full roof, and it was, they're real happy with everything that's going on. Their fundraiser is going well, they still have room for more. They're asking for donations of a hundred dollars, which pays for thirty-three meals for the seniors.
How many?
Thirty-three. Yeah, if you, if you give a hundred dollar donation, they feed thirty-three seniors, which is, which is a good deal, and that's helping with their, their membership drive, and it seems they're bringing people back, and since they changed to Lake Point, they've served over six-hundred-and-ninety meals, just that short time, compared with what they were serving last time, and they were lucky if they get six. So now they're doing about thirty a day, so.
Good.
It was a good visit.
Good, thanks for going.
Yeah.
I saw that invite, unable to make it, so thank you for going.
Glad to, got a lot of conversation down there.
Good.
I want to, I want to pigtail off of what Nick was talking about with the golf course. After the second meeting, I made both meetings, after the second meeting, I got introduced to a gentleman who was not for the golf course sale. And he asked some questions, and I knew quite a few of them, but there was, I would like to ask the question of, how did this, how did the Great Life entity get, did, like, they just send us, like willy-nilly send us an offer? Did we contact them? How did that get started? Because that was a question that I, I don't think, I didn't know.
Yeah, so the answer to that question is that one day, I believe, they actually called the city, and they spoke with me. They had acquired a golf course in Wichita, and as their model suggests, they kind of plant a flag, and then they are attempting to acquire golf courses in our region. It's my understanding that they'd not only reached out to El Dorado, they'd reached out to a number of area golf courses, and we just haven't been able to block, so completely unsolicited, we didn't see coming, and that's kind of how that conversation started. Once they, they called us, they asked if we'd be interested in a discussion about the golf course, and, you know, we said, "Yeah, sure, I mean, why not?" And then they submitted the proposal, and that's what we're at right now.
Okay, and that's where, and I had a feeling that's how it was from the meetings, but I just wanted to clarify what that, how that kind of played out. Neither one of mine had, my committees haven't met yet, but I will echo what Nick said about the Prairie Trails. I, I went to both meetings, and I feel like they were really, they talked it out, they really kind of processed it, and felt like it was a, it was a good thing to pursue. Don't feel like, they didn't really discuss management or anything like that. They, they didn't want to entertain that, as far as I could tell. I'd like to encourage everybody to think through your, your people in your phone, and the people that don't have a place to go for Thanksgiving, buy them over for your meal that can make or break someone's holidays, so happy Thanksgiving, is all I guess.
Great, thanks. Let's see, Inc. meeting last week, general business as usual there, and then they have, as they get ready to assign new officers coming up next week, next year, and then they appointed new board members to that, in that session. I think at this point, I would say that David and I spoke, it's been a couple weeks ago, then we had some more conversation today, and I think I sent all commissioners an email today about it's time for annual review for David. I have a, we talked, David and I talked about a form similar to last year's that we would circulate for you guys to fill out, and we'd like to have, I'll send that out to you either tonight or tomorrow morning. It's, it pretty well describes the process similar to last year, and then we will reconvene and try and have that ready to meet with David in an executive session and have some conversation about the annual review at our next, at our December meeting. He'd like to have that wrapped up by.
I thought we were doing that with him every two years now, instead of every year.
Two years, I don't.
No, I think the contract says every year, I can't remember the term, was it two-year contract, is that what it was?
Yeah. So, watch your emails for that form, and then certainly the conversation we have after that is, is ongoing. Like to have that done, so.
So first meeting in December?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be, what is that, the third? Yeah, that would be the third. It's not that far away. Nope. And I don't have anything else other than that. David, did you move this on to, with no other commissioners weighing in, I will move this on to City Manager's report.
Yeah, just got a couple things. So Thanksgiving week, city offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday, but trash service will be slightly modified. So on Thursday, trash, Thursday's trash, so if you have trash on Thursday, normally, your trash will run on Wednesday. Friday trash would be normal. Public Works Department is asking folks to get their trash out at 7:00 a.m. as best as they can, so that we can get those guys home, so they can celebrate the holiday with their families as well. Christmas in downtown is coming up, December first, it's starting at 6:00 p.m. We'll have a number of events to include parade and Christmas tree lighting. The Douglas Road petition that you all had talked about, about a meeting or so ago, that petition is due on December sixth to the city offices. The commission will review it on December six-seventeenth, I'm sorry, December seventeenth. It missed a publication deadline, and so that petition date had to be bumped back a little bit, so that'll be coming, coming up here soon. And then another thing that Ashlyn has discovered is that when a city wants to sell or lease parkland property to include golf courses, state law requires a thirty-day notification in the newspaper, along with a date, or notification in the newspaper, and then there's a period, thirty-day period at which a number of the registered voters can actually file a protest to challenge the sale and release of said grounds. So we actually have preemptively published that, and the reason we did so is because if it were provided to the paper today by the four o'clock deadline, the three, thirty-day deadline is December 29th, 2018, and given the time of the essence on this transaction, that would allow for that requirement to be met. In the event that the commission does not go along with any sale and releasing arrangement, it would be a moot point, and no harm, no foul on that. But in the event that the commission does elect to go forward, then the clock has already started on the, on the notification period. And Ashlyn, correct me if I'm wrong, but is it 10% of the qualified electors that voted in the prior election, which would be this past November, which was?
Thirty-eight hundred.
Thirty-eight hundred, so we're looking at about 380 folks that could file a petition, and if that petition is filed by December 29th with the number of voters that is necessary, then what it will do is it will kick the sale and or lease, not and or, sale or lease to a special election at some point.
And they have to be residents of the city.
They have to be qualified registered voters of the city of El Dorado, I expect.
Just that I want to make sure, that's an action that didn't take commission?
No.
Direction to do, to advertise the land?
No.
Just, just the final approval to sell, or do whatever?
Correct, the statute requires that the proposal to sell, that the community be notified of a proposal to sell, so the notice is a notice of proposal, and then people have thirty days after publication to do the protest petition and go from there, but in the interim, we can move forward business as usual, and then after that is when I, I would suggest that the commission, should they want to take action on the proposal, take action at that time.
So, and so to meet that schedule, we're looking at having a, a special meeting at the end of December for action on this, is that correct?
December 31st.
So we'd be looking at having a meeting on December 31st?
We can. I think from a timing standpoint, we had to have it done by the 29th. I'm sure that Great Life, I mean, if we move it just a day or two.
Because otherwise, we'd be having a normal commission meeting on the 7th of January, and is that okay to make action at that point?
It's fine with me to, for you to take action anytime after that thirty days.
After the thirty, after.
I just want to give thirty full days, by statute.
Okay.
So we will reach out to Prairie, or to Prairie Trails, to Great Life Golf Fitness, make them aware of that situation, and see if they have any issues with a delay on the closing.
Okay.
The other issue, should the commission elect to sell the golf course, we don't have a legal description that would allow us to prepare a deed, so what we, what we are proposing to do to remedy that is get the property platted. There are also some specific things that we need to reserve, for example, right-of-way or the bike pedestrian trail, and some other easements for water lines that go through the property that were not previously described. And so even if we wanted to close at the end of the month, we unfortunately can't do so because we don't have that description, and so Prairie Trail, Prairie Trails, Great Life is aware of that situation, and they, they are understanding that we're going to do what we can to make that happen as quickly as possible, should the commission elect to move forward, and so I think we'll be able to wrap that into a closing simultaneous with this issue if need be.
So January 7th won't be approved?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
We don't have time to go through the plating process either.
Yeah, the plating process will be, I think, middle of February.
You know, what we're hopeful for is, is potentially meeting the Land Commission in December, do a preliminary final plat at the same time, and then it could be at the city commission last meeting in January, so the third Monday in January. The boundary's not in question, there is a legal there for that. What you have is, you've had a golf course that's been owned by local individuals, and now the city for its existence, and we have things like Country Club Lane, which isn't a road right-of-way technically. You have improvements that have been made, like bike paths, since the city has owned it, that haven't been set aside as true easements. So I think it's in best interest of both parties to get that cleaned up and documented and platted and have that there, so the city's interest as well as the golf course's interest can be preserved.
Yeah, I just questioned the timing, have we already got engineering working on it?
Yes.
We have a proposal from local survey company.
And they, and they're aware?
Feels confident they can meet that deadline.
Okay.
They are the ones that did the boundary survey of the course when the city purchased it in 2009, so they have all that work and title work already at hand. There's been a few, few boundary changes since that time, but nothing major.
Okay.
When Great Life submitted a proposal, obviously the closing date was January 2nd, although that's a proposal, and I think they understand that we have to go through a public process, we're a municipality, and there's a process, we can't just put a switch and sell them the golf course, there's a public process. So I think under ideal circumstances, they would have liked to be closed by January 2nd, but if we're not, it's not like the deal just evaporates and they're walking because, you know, well, you guys didn't get your timeline. I've talked to them, they understand that there are a couple of issues that need to be worked out in this transaction in order for them to have what they need in terms of a legal, legal, and to preserve what we need in order to preserve what we would like to preserve access to, so I don't, I think that's not going to be a huge, huge problem for this.
Okay. Okay. All right, we'll move on to next. Okay, you have financial report.
Oh, yes. So, we have the third quarter 2018 financial report, so you should have a copy of this in front of you, and I'll refer to the screen as well. So, what I'll be talking about is just a few, most of our major operating funds, I think all of them actually. So, the first one we have is the general fund, and what you're going to see on these slides, the green bar represents what was budgeted. On the left is revenue, on the right is expenses, and the red bar represents actual, so you can kind of see how that plays out. In terms of the general fund, through the third quarter, we have brought in $7.2 million worth of revenue, and we have spent $5.6 million in expenses. Our cash balance in the general fund is $3.1 million, which complies with our reserve target balance range of 1.3 to 2.3 million dollars. So, the general fund is looking pretty good. Now, you have to understand that this is, of course, third quarter, so there will be some things that, transfers or other expenses that may come out of this for the fourth quarter, where that cash balance may come down, or in some cases on these slides may go up as well. So, when I'm talking about the cash balance, understand that that's a snapshot in time and may change for the fourth quarter. So, general fund, looking pretty good. We are about where we should be in this fund in terms of revenue, and expenses, we're just under where we need to be for the third quarter, so we're looking healthy for this fund. Airport fund, on this fund, this fund generally works pretty well for us. We've brought in $196,000 worth of revenue, and we've spent $156,000 worth of expenses in the airport fund. Cash balance in the airport fund is about $50,000, which fits into our reserve target range of 35,000 to 59,000 dollars. The Major Street Fund, we have currently spent $196,805 compared to $156,000 worth of expenses, and the cash balance on this fund is 22,517, which is lower than our reserve target balance range of 129 to 216. One thing that we are going to do on this fund is look at the policy, kind of define this reserve requirement a little bit differently. The reason for that, the Major Street Fund does, we use a lot of the funds for capital, street maintenance repairs, things like that, but we do have some operating expenses where we pay some salaries out of here. The funds that we use for capital expenses, obviously we want to utilize as much of those funds for flood potholes and fixing streets as possible. So, what this reserve target balance represents is a percentage of between 15 and 25% of the expenses for that fund, but we probably want to scale that back and just reflect the operating expenses that are used to pay salaries as opposed to what we use for potholes. And the reason for that is, we have to pay people, obviously, but if we have a decrease in funding for whatever reason from year to year, we can always do less potholes, and so we might, we might change this so that the cash balance better reflects what we need to reserve for, if that makes sense. So, but right now, we have 22,000, and we'll kind of look at that and kind of let you know what that looks like. Stormwater Fund, we've brought in to date $325,000. We've spent about $190,000, and our cash balance right now is 292,746, which fits in with our reserve target range of 36,000 to 60,000 dollars. Prairie Trails Fund, as you can see here, we've brought in year-to-date $292,000 for that fund against expenses of 377,729, which puts our cash balance at negative 94,729. We will be making a transfer, or we have made a transfer, to offset the cost or the expenses of this. So, as you look at your report that was emailed out in the packet, the cash balance number as well as the revenue number is a little bit different, but that reflects the transfer that is made from the general fund to offset the difference. And so what happens is, we make that transfer in the third quarter, and then we back out what we don't need in the fourth quarter. That's been common practice, and we're going to look at that practice and see if we just make the transfer in the fourth quarter to cover the difference. But at any rate, year-to-date, we are currently, if you take out the transfer, we're currently short $94,000, which is obviously less than where we'd like to be with respective Prairie Tourism, we have brought in $129,000 in transient guest taxes as well as some other funds that are revenues that we bring in to that fund, and we have spent year-to-date $182,000. This fund, however, we are making a, we have made a concerted effort to spend down some of the fund balance in this fund, and the reason for that is, the tourism fund had a fairly large cash balance at the beginning of the year, and now we currently, year-to-date, have a cash balance of $234,000, and again, that was about 325 to 350 at the beginning of the year. We spent that down a little bit as a result of doing some things that we wanted to do with this fund, but we did that as part of our budget process. The target policy suggests that we should have anywhere between 41 and 68,000 dollars in the tourism fund, and so again, we're kind of glide pathing down to get to where we should be in this fund. And one thing I will say about the tourism fund, our revenues are up, and they're up year-to-date from a transient guest tax standpoint, we're experiencing much higher transient guest tax than we have the year prior, and a lot of that's due to turnaround, so we'll have those numbers come out here soon as well. We get those numbers quarterly. The Water Fund, this fund is much healthier than it was the same time a year ago. We have spent, or we brought in a little over $3 million in revenue, and we've spent about $3.3 million, is that right? Yeah, $3.3 million in expenses. Our cash balance in this fund, however, is $844,000, which is right in between the reserve target range of 593 to 989,000 dollars. So, we've been able to add a little bit of cash balance to our reserve, and right now, we're projecting, or we are budgeted to spend just about what we bring in in revenue. So, we may not carry over a whole lot, but right now, we're in a comfortable spot. Not so much in the Sewer Fund, however, we have spent 1.8 million dollars, I'm sorry, we've brought in 1.8 million dollars in revenue year-to-date, and we've spent 2.1 million dollars in expenses. Our cash balance in this fund is $55,000, which is well below where our target reserve range. So, as you recall, one of the first steps we did for this fund was to increase the register surfees, which did increase the revenues, but we've had some unexpected expenses this year with the Grand Park project. We also had another sewer project on Meadow Road that we had, and then winter litigation expenses are also included in this fund as well. So, that's kind of where we are with the Sewer Fund.
So, those two projects, the money's already included in this number?
That's okay. Close up. Refuse Fund, we have brought in 1.1 million dollars in revenue on 1.1 million dollars of expenses, so we're very close to breaking even on that, on actual dollars for the quarter. Cash balance is at 404,000 dollars, and that number is in excess of the reserve target range. And again, this fund, we save up and build up those funds, we can buy a trash truck, and then we spend it all at once on a 200 and some odd thousand dollar trash truck. So, this fund is operating exactly like it should, as we plan to make that next trash truck purchase, I believe, the next year. And then the compressed gas fund, we've brought in 220,000 dollars of revenue, and we've spent $10,947 in expenses. Cash balance on this fund is $2,700, which is right in between where we want to be in terms of our reserve target range, so. And then the final fund we'll talk about real quickly is the data processing fund. 949,000 dollars of revenue year-to-date, we've only had 625,000 dollars of expenses. This fund is spent with transfers, so each, as we make those transfers, and then our expenses are salary, so we have all of our enterprise funds paying into this, as well as the general fund and some other funds pay in, and they pay salaries of the city manager, finance director, city clerk, a couple others, so it's really a passer fund of sorts. Our cash balance right now is 352,136 dollars, so all in all, we have a couple funds we need to address, and everything else looks pretty good.
Compressed natural gas, you've got a balance of 2,700, but you've brought in $10,000 more than your expenses.
Yeah, I've never seen that. I have it in front of me right now.
It just, it seems like there's 10 grand missing.
In terms of?
Of your numbers.
I'll check that number just to make sure it's, I didn't put back finger at something.
Problem. Thank you.
This spreadsheet is the same as, excuse me, as the slides.
Yes, with the exception of Prairie Trails in the transfer.
Right, okay, well, on the CNG, you have a cash balance of 9,500.
Okay.
So, I might have just missed that one.
I figured it.
Well, you picked up your number from down below. You're okay. Look at your spreadsheet.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
My presentation is incorrect on that one slide.
Okay. Some reviews coming up.
So, that, right, that's the third quarter finances, we're looking, we're pretty good.
Good job.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Awesome.
That moves us to our next on the agenda. We have, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize, could I have your ear for a moment, please?
Is that, I need to ask the commission, is that?
Commissioner.
Go ahead.
Ray Cornell, 2520 Chase, I'm certainly here in Eldorado and have been for 42 years. I apologize to the commission, I anticipated that you would start your business at 7:00. Traditionally, that's been my experience with the commission, and I'm late, and I apologize, but I have some things that I'd like to share with the commission on behalf of my client, David Hastings and his wife Katrina, and if you'd provide me 10 minutes, I'll share that with you so that you can at least be aware of it, take it into consideration.
Okay.
Okay.
Ashlyn, should we inform Mr.?
Pardon? Oh, sorry, didn't finish your question.
No, I mean, should we inform Mr. Cornell that we've already voted and it's passed?
Yeah, yes, that had the case, sorry, they've already done a vote. I imagine he's already aware of that, and I think he's still requesting to make a presentation to you.
I am. My client told me, as I was walking in, that you'd already taken up the matter and taken the vote, and what I'd like to do is share with you the information. It may change your position or opinion, or it may not, but at least I've had an opportunity to share that with you, and I know there's a Chiefs game tonight, and I don't want to prolong it, but I think this is important. And again, I apologize for not being here earlier, I honestly thought, and sometimes you can't rely on your experience.
Okay.
All right, well, David and Katrina have six children, and they bought this property in 2001, and it's a rural home. This RV trailer park was not there on the south side of their property when they bought their home, came in later on, and now they want to expand it, and he has some concerns about the operation of the trailer park, the RV park, and I'd like to share those with you, and then I'd like to share some suggestions that I had for the commission that maybe the planning board wanted to look at a little closer. This property, and I'm going to, I have a packet for each of you that I'd like, if I might.
Thank you.
It has four photos, a couple of aerials, and then some comments. They have six children, three of whom currently reside in the home, three have grown, but Blake has two children, Carson, their granddaughter, and Hayden. They operate this as a daycare, their grandchildren live there. The photos, if you turn to the third page, there's a photo one that's a picture of the RV on the south side of their property, and as you can see, there's no privacy fence, it's a gravel parkway, and the RVs are right next to their property line. The next photo, number two, shows a little bit closer, but it also shows that the gravel is washing off of their drive onto the Hastings property. And if you looked at the minutes from the planning commission, drainage was an issue that was raised by David, and it's my understanding that their motion was to approve it, subject to, a look at the engineering on drainage and see what could be done to eliminate this drainage from the RV park onto the Hastings. The third photo is from their backyard, you can see on the right side that one RV, but it's looking to the east, and that's the area that they want to expand the RV park into. And so now it's open, you know, it's a backyard that they can enjoy, and they want to put 35 RVs on that east side. The fourth photo is a little closer view from the Hastings property line looking straight east, and that boat and those trees are going to be eliminated, and the RV park is to be expanded into that area. The aerial, which is exhibit A, is the one that was submitted by the applicants, and if you look at that aerial, you'll see that they have the proposed expansion on the south side of the Hastings property, adjacent to the RV park that they already have. And quite frankly, the Hastings don't object to that. If that's where the RV park goes, they're fine with that location. The problem is, the applicant submitted this aerial and the proposed expansion, and then they expanded it further to the north, and it goes more than halfway to the north on the resident, and it takes up most of the backyard of the Hastings. We would like for the planning commission to consider what would be exhibit B, and that's a line that goes straight from the west to the east, adjacent and parallel to the existing property line of the dungeons, so that their RV expansion is only in the south side location that it currently resides, and that leaves the backyard open, for open space, and allows them to enjoy their backyard without having an RV park right next to it. We would like the commission, or the planning commission, to consider a private fence, not only along the new area, but also the existing RV park, so that it's screened from the Hastings property. We'd like for that area to be paved, as you're aware, you have wind from the south, you've got that gravel dust that's blowing onto the Hastings property, you've got the dungeons property that's elevated and it's draining onto the Hastings property, so if it's paved, it will eliminate some of that dust, it'll also eliminate some of the noise. We'd also like you to consider, instead of exiting this new area of the RV on the north side, exit on the south side, so it's less noise. We'd like you to consider the lights coming straight down onto the RV park's property rather than being allowed to go to the Hastings property. I've sent out those requests in writing in the presentation, and again, I apologize sincerely for not making this earlier. The... The ordinance that I read today says that you've approved it and it doesn't seem to have any restrictions. And I think in fairness to the Hastings, to preserve their property value, and that's kind of the bottom line. Mayor, commissioners, if you had this RV park in your backyard, if they wanted to expand it and come up on the side of your backyard and you've got 35 more people residing next to you on a gravel base that creates noise, creates dust, creates runoff, I think you'd want some protections. And I think the zoning rules and regulations that you have in your book clearly address that and provide for it. Under Article 10, they say that the parking as constructed is required to be paved with a hard surface of bituminous or concrete material. Now, they're asking for a variance from that and the zoning board was supposed to meet Wednesday on that and didn't. But I think that would be a requirement under your rules and should have been in the ordinance. I think the...
They're asking for a variance, it is in the ordinance, isn't it?
It's in the ordinance. So currently they require...
They're asking for a variance, it would be correct.
It would be.
Okay.
If you look on Article 10 under 6, what things are to be taken into consideration, the screening, the ingress and egress, the general layout, all of those are to be considered because under E shall be well-drained and primarily designed to provide sufficient space. I haven't seen, you know, a site plan that shows sufficient space according to your rules and regulations. So I'm raising all of these. I called the applicant this afternoon and said, here are my concerns, and I was going to appear tonight and share those with the commission. He indicated that he was willing to screen, but as I said, in the ordinance that you proposed to pass, it doesn't specifically state that. The drainage issue, to my knowledge, has not been addressed. At least I haven't seen anything from an engineer that addresses that. So for all those reasons, I guess I'd request respectfully, and I don't think there's any legal reason why you can't, address this issue, maybe send it back to the planning board to have those specific concerns addressed. I'm not sure they were. My client wasn't represented by counsel at that point. And so he tried to express it as best he could, but I'm not sure each of those issues were brought to the planning commission's attention. So again, those are my requests and I'm asking for consideration for David and Katrina and their family. Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of questions that I have.
Sure.
What we, and to Ash, and to Scott even, what we approved tonight was a land use. I would imagine at this point forward, any work out there would require a building permit, which would then call into question some of these other pavement and lot separations and setbacks and that kind of thing associated with building permit.
Yeah. As you saw in your staff memo tonight, it talks about the buffer, it talks about the scale of the development. Part of your special use permit does require pavement, which the applicant is asking for variance from your BZA board for that, to waive that. It was the planning commission's recommendation to have the county review drainage and stormwater runoff. You all approved the planning commission's recommendation tonight. Trying to think, there is a lot split that has taken place, so the map that I provided you all tonight of where the zoning change would take place is, does run directly east-west with that current northern line, if that makes sense?
No, because what was submitted...
No.
Because what was submitted for proposed expansion here, I think equals what you're asking in terms of where the law...
This is the only one that shows anything different than what...
Yeah. I think it doesn't, Mayor. I think what Commissioner Guthrie showing is further north is what he presented and what your engineers holding. And if what the engineers holding, we have no objection to that. I think what you're going to find is that his request was further north, so it got confusing.
I can, the city is in possession of the survey splitting this parcel in half. That is how we created that northern boundary of the area for the special use permit.
So...
So Ray's black and white pretty much matches up with your color.
It does, but that's our proposal and it's not evidently what they wanted and maybe what you approved. I don't know what you approved.
So, so thank you for this. So our special use permit, in my mind, was proposed expansion, which was this. Do we have a legal description of the special use permit?
We do, based off lot split.
Off the lot split, and that's different than this diagram right here.
Yes. Let me see if the ordinance has a legal...
Well, so which, which one, which one do we approve, Scott? The one with the yellow box?
Yes, what I, what we presented.
That right there. So that matches what you submitted.
This.
Looks like it.
The legal description is in the ordinance.
Yeah, this is the one that we would approve, but I think you're going to find...
That's the one we...
They're asking to go further north than that.
Well, Scott says that they, if Scott says they didn't, I have no other way to go off that except for trust Scott.
This is further north. That's 195 feet wide, but 660 feet north and south. And that is further north than what the proposed expansion aerial map shows.
And I apologize, we were unaware, or at least I was unaware of these concerns or issues. You know, we do have a lot split with boundary and legal description provided by the applicant. One of the requirements is they wanted to keep the single-family home that is on the access or facing US 54. So they did that survey work, they created that lot split. Legal description was inserted in the ordinance describing it. This is how we arrived at the area for the special use permit for representational purpose of night to show you where that boundary would be.
As I'm submitting to you, that's not an accurate representation of the boundary that they're asking for.
I think at this stage, the complication is, and the problem is, is that ideally, all of these issues would have been brought up at the public hearing with the planning commission, which puts the city in a bit of a predicament because even without the timing, there wasn't necessarily a mechanism for, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on your client's name.
David Hastings.
Thank you. Mr. Hastings to make presentations to the commission at this stage. So I think...
Mr. Hastings did speak at the planning commission meeting. He's the one who was concerned about the drainage. And the planning commission did have discussion and that was a concern of theirs as well, so that's why they felt it was important to add that condition to the recommendation to you all.
So do we sit here in confidence that the planning commission understood and saw an accurate diagram based off of the legal description for the special use permit? Because as I look at this here, we've got two different ones.
Sitting here tonight, I cannot, okay, say this is a section corner and break a scale out.
Ashlyn, since we've got conflicting information here, is it appropriate now that we maybe revisit this ordinance? What do we need to do? Because I now don't feel comfortable until the two pieces of documents really coincide that we proceed. Something's been brought up after the fact.
You know, this, sorry, Scott.
Is this something with guidance from the commission that staff can review?
Yeah, I have what I want to, I'm just trying to think of the procedural mechanisms that we need to follow, given the scenario that we're in. Because I don't, with all due respect to Ray, I don't want to create a scenario where we set precedence, where we set votes and then go back. And I understand what the will of the commission is. Off the top of my head, I don't know what the procedure would be on a vote because the meeting hasn't closed. But the applicant is not here to answer questions because he's left.
And I'm not wanting to prejudice the applicant, but I think, I think in fairness, because I think it's so confusing, that you could set aside the decision tonight, send it back to the planning commission. I will appear, staff will be better prepared to say whether this aerial that was presented by the applicant is the area that they want to use or if it's different, and if it's different how. So we're all talking about the same area and consider these other concerns that unfortunately David didn't have the opportunity to make clear to the planning commission. And then it comes back to you. We aren't trying to delay it, we're here, but I think that would be fair to both parties and I'd respectfully request that that be the approach.
My question is, I was like, which one, which one of those pictures did we vote on?
In my mind, we voted on this one.
That's the one in my mind.
When I looked at my information, I voted on this one.
Right.
Which is the same one that's in our book, just not in common.
The yellow, the one with the yellow.
Yeah, this one.
And then, and then these, and then these concerns in, in the packet that Mr. Cannell gave us, there's six. At the planning commission meeting, I found three of the six that were brought up at the planning, at the public hearing. And now there's six.
We made three.
I found three.
Three concerns of...
Three concerns were brought up at the planning commission. The resale, which is number one on here, the drainage, which is...
Addressed in the...
Number three, the rain runoff. And then the, I don't know what the electric issues are. There's lights, I don't know, is that the electric issue?
It was, Mr. Cannell's client was concerned about, there were some reliability issues out there from the electric provider, Westar. So not that that played into the special use permit, but he didn't mention that, that there, they have issues.
They have to put bigger pots in there if there's too much load, so that's Westar's problem.
Yeah.
We have also in our information here, a privacy fence and a green buffer of 10-foot around the perimeter of the bordering properties, which I had taken into consideration in my thought, understanding, reading that to understand that the development was going to have privacy fence and, and green buffer. Well, point will taken on the lights, respectfully aiming in an appropriate direction. But I don't, you know, quite honestly, sending it back is not, I don't think we can send it back. What I'd like to do, I guess, is have staff confirm legal descriptions based off of what was presented. And then, Ashlyn, maybe you and Mr. Cannell talk through what, what next steps, if they don't align what next steps we need, and David into that conversation, what our next steps might need to be.
My main concern is which picture did we vote on?
Because if we've got something that doesn't match, then we've got...
Well, the legal description, I think, is identical across the board. I know that you're talking about photographs and there's two different. I don't have, I'm just trying to make sure I understand what we're talking about here. There's two, there's a legal description, but two different versions of what that description looks like.
Right, so there's been different maps or exhibits submitted and they want to know which one represents this legal description.
Right. Yeah, correct.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, re-submit your question to me.
That's what I thought.
Okay.
Seven, eight, nine, three.
Okay.
So my question is, can we get some clarification on what legal description?
Yeah, I think directing staff to get clarification on, on what the legal description is actually between the two of these, what you're looking at.
Because I see his point, the one in black goes quite a bit farther north than the one in yellow.
And the legal in your ordinance is everything except, so that whole 2.3 acre parcel is everything except the north 118 feet. That, you know, that's how this was depicted, staff showing the limits of where that SGP would be in place. I did not include in your packet the actual lot split and the boundary survey that was done to be able to make this zoning change. That can be provided as well.
I think regardless, and we'll work with what the will of the commission is, but I think what's important to point out here, both for the purposes of this and for the record, is that these types of issues, getting these kinds of descriptions and these sorted out and done correctly for you all, that's why it's important that all of this stuff is brought up at the planning commission meeting and the public hearing at that meeting. And I understand that Mr...
Hastings.
I'm the worst, I'm so sorry.
You could call me Ray.
Thanks, Ray. That Mr. Hastings was unrepresented at that time and that Mr. Cannell is appearing on his behalf, but I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't explain to both the commission and to anyone, the four people that are watching this, that those public hearings...
They have a much better audience than that.
Well, at this point, maybe. The public, that's the point of those, that's what you're here for.
They're all watching the football game.
So I can work with, I don't have the direct answer of what we do next, I just don't know. But what I do know is that I don't want to set a precedent where we back out of things that we've already done because we're skipping over the importance of a public hearing. So I just want to hit on that note, that's why those are important.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Question, I got Scott before you finish. So this is 118 feet right here. This is what we approved. We did not approve this.
That is the drawing the applicant gave us, yeah.
We approved this and that's what should move forward.
So that's what I'm asking, is that that be, that be confirmed?
Let us look at the survey that was provided to us and review that, the legal description in the ordinance.
And then I would ask that, Ashlyn and David, if we have a conflict in what we looked at here versus what the legal is, that we, that we report back on what our next steps need to be.
Okay.
And that'll put it right where he wants it to.
Mr. Cannell is...
It will, thank you, Commissioner, because we don't have an objection. If, if what they presented to you and they noted as the proposed expansion is where the addition is, we have no objection to that. We would like some of these considerations for site, noise and use to be at least considered, if not added, to the conditional use permit or special use permit. But if you, if you went further north, then it's my understanding that the commission didn't vote to approve that, at least that wasn't your intent.
That's, that's not the drawing I looked at.
That's not the drawing I voted on.
Okay, thank you. And thanks for hearing me. Again, I apologize.
All right.
Go chief.
6:30.
Well, you know, I'm too old and need to realize that things change.
Been switched for two years.
You bet. Thank you.
I changed it.
She changed it.
I'm the one who said when I came on, I want 6:30.
Well, I haven't been, haven't been since you came on, so I've been seven for a long time.
Do you see the dimensions on that?
Yeah, but thank you.
There's dimensions on this one.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Moving on to our next item on agenda is executive session of the acquisition of real property.
Yeah, probably until it was kind of possible.
Let's do it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was conservative, boy turning.
Okay, next would be executive session. Are we still thinking 20 minutes or we have...
I think we can cover it 20 minutes.
Okay. All right. I need a motion to go into executive session for 20 minutes until, that would be until 8:00, 7:00.
I move to recess into executive session pursuant to KSA 75-4319B6 for the purposes of preliminarily discussing the acquisition of real property and to reconvene the meeting.
for the purposes of preliminarily discussing the acquisition of real property and to reconvene the meeting.